Well, good evening, folks, and welcome to our newest reopening of schools town hall meeting, August 20th. This is the fourth town hall we've hosted since the end of July. For those of you who have previously joined us, we have some new information for you this evening. Just to go over a couple of the items before we start, this webinar, this town hall meeting is being recorded, made available probably late tomorrow afternoon. That way, if you'd like to review parts of this meeting or share the meeting with friends and other parents within the district, that would be great. We certainly thank you for taking the time out this evening of your busy schedule to join us for some of this important information on reopening our schools. What I've done in the past and will do this evening is begin by giving a brief overview. So for those of you who have joined us before, please bear with me. That's to enable our new viewers to catch up and bring everybody up to the same level. We'll also review the opening weeks of school. We introduced a grid to you last week. That grid has been updated, but we've made some changes to that this evening. And then also to answer questions that have been submitted through the Chatham United email address, as well as those that you may submit tonight through the question and answer function within Zoom. Let's get started. So first of all, the school district was required to publish a reopening plan. We did so on August 3rd. In addition to opening the opening plan, we created an executive summary, if you will, or a snapshot, a several-page document that highlighted some of the important and salient points from the plan, so that parents in a very short period of time could become familiar with some of the elements of what we're dealing with during reopening. I'd also point you to our district website, where all these documents are available. If you go to our homepage, about halfway down the homepage, you're going to see an icon that says coronavirus. If you follow that icon to a specially-designed page, you'll see all the documents that we will be referencing tonight, including the full plan. Last Friday, as per the governor, we added some additional documents to that website. I'll be reviewing parts of those documents this evening. We added a questions and answer document, full of some very helpful information of those types of questions that parents in the community have been asking us over the last three or four weeks. So if you have something on your mind before you send it into Chatham United, take a peek at that question and answer document. Typically, most of the popular questions are addressed there. We'll also take a look at the contact tracing and COVID-19 testing documents, both of those being created in collaboration with the Clubby County Department of Health. The plan addresses 13 areas, as per the state education department guidelines that we were given for developing the plan. This evening, we're going to highlight several of the major areas that I think are of importance and on the minds of most of our school community: health and safety, facilities, nutrition, transportation. But certainly, if you have questions about any of the areas that you see here, and you don't find those answers in the documents that I refer to, please reach out to us. We'd be happy to provide you additional information. Let's get right into some of the health and safety items. Also tonight, I've added a new feature to our town halls. If you see this icon here called "please and thank you," I'm going to point out at several points within the presentation how you, as a school community, can help us further be successful with this opening. I've been asked on numerous occasions, "We want to be a part of this." We've said that we know it takes a village, and certainly this time, we'll take a village to be successful. And in this particular presentation, I'm going to point out some very specific examples where you, as students, parents, staff, and a school community, can help us be more successful. So I'll point that icon out as we move through the presentation. You've heard me in the past tell you that we are required to do health checks. Both students and staff will be participating in an online self-screening, self-check program each morning. Each morning, parents will receive an email or an SMS asking them to answer some health questions, the same ones that you're probably accustomed to answering when you go into a doctor's office or other areas, other events, and other venues. We're going to show you what that looks like in just a second. There's a place where we really need you to help. If we're able to successfully screen everyone prior to coming to school, that will help us when the students get here and not slowing us down and getting right into the classrooms and onto instruction. The other place where we really feel that you can help us out is in terms of healthy hygiene practices. When I refer to that, I'm talking about respiratory hygiene, the use of masks, and hand washing. Although we're going to review all the best practices with our students through the use of video and demonstration and flyers multiple times as we open the school year, you too, as parents, can reinforce those habits at home for us, allowing and practicing wearing masks at various times over the next few weeks, so our students become accustomed to that being the new norm and the expectation. We're going to go over specific mask procedures and policies a little bit later in the presentation, but there's your first, "Please help us," and we do appreciate it. Thank you. In terms of defining what social distancing is, social distancing, as per the guidelines, can either be the concept that you're six feet or more from somebody, but can also be the fact that you are less than six feet and there's a use of a barrier, or the use of a mask. So there's social distancing, and then there's other ways to protect ourselves, and we'll talk more about that. We'll talk a little bit about PPE, a term that became, you know, new to most people who are not in the medical profession since COVID, as personal protective equipment. We'll talk about face coverings. For the purposes of school reopening, cloth face coverings are a pretty wide variety available out there. We, as a district, will provide students and staff, I'm pleased to report, that we have just received a healthy shipment of both our cloth and disposable masks, so we're in good shape, better shape than we were when we first began some of these town hall meetings. We're going to provide students and staff who choose to take advantage of this, two cloth masks. The notion there is that they should be laundered once or twice a week, so you'll have a spare. We also have a plentiful supply of disposable masks, and where a student may forget one, or one becomes damaged, or something happens where they need another mask for the day, we'll be able to provide that. The management of ill persons, we're going to talk a little bit about that today when we get to the contact tracing and the COVID testing, but we also wanted to let you know that we do have protocols in place for isolation rooms in each of our buildings. Our nurses have been working countless hours in setting up their office and the isolation rooms which we're required to have. And the way that will go is this: if a student comes in and perhaps develops one of the known symptoms during the day, or runs a fever that's 100 degrees, 100.0 or higher, they will immediately be taken to the isolation room, and a parent or guardian will be contacted, and the expectation is that you will need to pick up your child within 30 minutes of being contacted. That's what we would really like. Here's another place where, please, please help us keep people safe by coming in and, you know, giving your students when you've been called. We'll talk more about what the expectation is in terms of afterwards, what has to happen. Also, our school nurses have asked us that if your student is coming back in any way, shape, or form in person, full-time or through the hybrid model, and they require medications when they're here on the campus, please contact your school nurse to make arrangements for you to drop off medications. I'm going to take a minute and introduce, do we have Andy on the call? Let me just check here. I don't see him. Okay. Cleaning and disinfecting. We know that this is an extremely important part of our ability to stay and reduce risk around the district. Our new facilities director, Andy Davy, he had not gotten the link in time, has been working tirelessly with the staff to put in new protocols in place for cleaning our buildings. That includes frequent cleaning and disinfecting of high-touch areas, as well as the protocols that are put in place each evening, including classrooms and areas where students have occupied during the day. He has a plentiful supply of all the FDA-approved, CDC-approved disinfecting solutions, and that staff is going through specialized training to make sure that we adequately know how to use those products effectively. The notion, in terms of the fact that we will not have a lot of extra activities going on, there will be no visitors to our building, we're not having any sports programs to start, there's no extracurricular activities, the custodial staff is going to be focused on the proper cleaning and disinfecting of our buildings. We are also asking where voluntarily teachers will help us do some, I'll call it spot cleaning during the day, perhaps wiping down some surfaces within their classroom. We'll provide all the products, but I do often get a question from staff as to whether they can clean and disinfect their own area during the day, and the answer to that is absolutely, we can use all the help we possibly can. This is just a quick glimpse of that, a screenshot from that self-screening program I talked to you about. I did it this morning as a test. Basically, you get the email or the SMS, and it asks you those four questions. Have you traveled to these areas outside of the state? They update that list on a frequent basis to match how that sometimes changes. Have you been in close proximity to someone who has been tested positive for COVID in the last 14 days? Have you tested positive, and are you running a fever of 100 degrees or more? So that goes back and shows you what that will look like. Now, if you have multiple children within a household, there'll be one email, and then you'll have to answer those questions for each individual child. If that is not done, and remember, that's a place where you can absolutely help us be more successful by doing that and complying with that request each morning. If that is not done, then an exceptions list is going to be generated, and then we'll have to deal with it when the child gets to school, which will just delay everything in the morning. Moving on to masks. So I've said this over the last couple of weeks, in our Questar Bosse's region, different school districts are adopting different practices and procedures. We are taking a very conservative approach to the use of masks. Remember that the guidelines, or you should know that the guidelines only state that masks have to be worn when social distancing is not possible. That means that students technically under the guidelines would not necessarily have to wear a mask in a classroom if they're properly socially distanced. We're not taking that approach. Initially, we're taking a more conservative approach to try to increase our success, decrease the exposure risk, and keep everybody safe. So the practice that we'll be following will be masks are required at all times: riding the bus, arriving and departure from school, common areas, hallways, and in classrooms. Now, we are taking into account that students may need a little bit of a break from a mask, and so we have come up with the baseline of a mask break program, and it basically goes like this: at MED, five minutes in every 30 on the hour or half hour, we will give students a break. That will only occur if those students are quietly seated in a classroom or in their seats. The mask breaks cannot take place unless that criteria is met. Same with 7 through 12, but there, we're doing it once, one five-minute break per period. And of course, it's very difficult to eat lunch with a mask on, so while students are eating, not necessarily during the whole lunch period, but while they're eating, and they're seated and properly socially distanced from others, they can bring down their mask. We're going to try to, one of the most common questions, oh, thank you, I just saw one of the questions come in, we're missing sixth grade from that. So grades 6 through 12 will be one five-minute break per period. Thank you for picking up on that, middle school, high school. I get a question, a lot of questions from parents in terms of compliance. What if my child does not comply? Well, let's talk a little bit about that. First, I mentioned earlier, this is where you can help us. You can help us reinforce the importance at home of why we're wearing masks. And remember, we're not necessarily wearing masks to protect ourselves, we're wearing masks to protect others. We're wearing masks to protect our family members, our grandparents, our siblings, perhaps even parents who may be uncompromised or have some of the underlying health conditions that put them at higher risk for contracting COVID or having that be a serious illness. So we really want to talk about the social responsibility aspect of that, when it's age-appropriate, and take that approach. We had a conversation, we had a kindergarten webinar today, and I was listening to Kristin talk to kindergarten parents. That's going to be new for them, that's going to be challenging. And so we're not going to put them in, you know, mask jail if they bring their mask down. We are an education facility. We're going to work with them to understand why it's important and try to get them to comply. We don't want to be punitive about this at all. However, at the higher grade levels, if people are, if a student's pulling down another student's mask, or being disruptive, or putting someone else's health and safety at harm, then we may have to deal with that more seriously, but we'll cross that bridge when we come to it. Let's talk a little bit about facilities and capacity. The principals and our facilities director, Andy Davy, evaluated all of our facilities to determine how we could properly move furniture around in our classrooms, and how could we maximize the capacity in a socially-distanced classroom. I'm going to show you some photos coming up in a minute here. We are able to, where possible, and we have purchased a few, use plastic or polycarbonate separators, so when students come to school, they may very well see some of those in main offices and places where there's some transactions going on, like you're accustomed to seeing at the supermarket and other places in public now. So we will utilize that when we return to school. Also, we are just in the process of installing signage. You'll see social distancing markers, things that you're seeing out in public, you're going to see here in school, directionality in the hallways. If you go to the supermarket, you can't go up one aisle and come down another. There's directions to try to keep people socially distanced. We're going to do some of those same concepts here in school. We are going to be promoting hand hygiene, allowing students to wash their hands as frequently as we possibly can. In some of our rooms, we have sinks that's easier than others, and we're not only going to be providing hand sanitizer stations at entrance points to the building, but we're also going to make hand sanitizer available to classrooms, to individual classrooms, in addition to disinfectant wipes, so that we can touch up some of those areas, those high-touch areas during the school day within our classrooms. Andy usually does a really good job with the ventilation. There's a lot of talk around ventilation and COVID. You've probably heard some of that in terms of reopening the malls, and you've heard conversations around filtration and ventilation. Let me give you my superintendent's ventilation 101. Not being an HVAC specialist, I'll take a crack at this. So first of all, you know, we've just completed, or we're in the process of completing a pretty large capital project that had a lot of HVAC upgrades in it. High schools receive a lot of new air handlers and ventilation units that allows us to use the state-of-the-art MERV 13 filters that you're hearing a lot about. We've analyzed all of our heating/ventilation systems and tried to upgrade the filtration component of them to the best extent possible, given the manufacturer's recommendations. In terms of fresh air, we can bring fresh air in through our air dehumming systems, our air exchange systems, so that we can adequately increase the amount of fresh air in all of our classrooms. And based on the outside temperature, when the outside temperature is conducive to allowing maximum fresh air to come in, we'll do that. When it's much more colder outside, 20, 30 degrees, we will still bring in fresh air, but it might be a smaller percentage, because we have to heat that air for a minimum of room temperature. So the facilities department is all over heating and ventilation and fresh air, to increase the fresh air percentages in all of our classrooms for the fall. Here's just a quick glimpse at the classroom setups, what the new normal, at least for the short term, will look like. Here are some classrooms where desks have been moved approximately six feet apart on center, and this is what a socially-distanced classroom would look like. Here's a shot from the elementary school, where we typically use more tables than desks, but again, perhaps only one child at a table if we can't properly socially distance them with six feet. I'm going to just briefly talk a little bit about child nutrition. Our child nutrition program will not substantially change. We still will be offering hot and nutritious meals to not only our students who are eligible for free and reduced lunch, but we'll also be making lunches available for those students who wish to purchase it. It's going to look a little different. We will likely not use our cafeterias in a traditional manner, especially at the elementary school. Likely lunches, breakfast and lunches will be ordered, and then brought to the classroom for consumption. We are fully aware that some students suffer from some severe allergies, and our food service director is making sure that we're aware of where that situation exists and how we need to be very careful with not only what those students eat or may purchase from us, but what other students within that classroom are bringing in to eat within that environment. So we feel that we have a good handle on child nutrition. At the middle school and high school, principals are still leaving the cafeteria use up to a little bit of discretion. Certainly, if the cafeteria is used, students will have to be socially distanced by moving the tables further apart, or, as you've seen in restaurants, not using certain seating, or in some suggestions have been, we might take those tables out totally and put in desks that are properly distanced. But it is conceivable that, to some small extent, our cafeterias at the middle school and high school may be used for consumption of breakfast and lunch, in addition to other activities where we need to spread students out in much bigger areas. When we think about it, other than outside, cafeterias, auditoriums, gymnasiums are the largest areas that we have within our school buildings. A little bit about transportation, a little bit of an update. You'll see something crossed out here, because I'm going to show you the next slide. I did mention earlier, and I just want to reinforce, and I probably should put a "please and thank you" here, students are required to wear masks on the bus. That means that when they leave you in the morning to go to the bus stop, please make sure that they have their mask with them. We will have a small supply of disposable masks on each bus, should that be a problem at the stop, but we do really appreciate your cooperation. All buses will be cleaned, touched up between morning and evening runs, but the guidance that we must follow is that they will be fully disinfected each evening before the next day. So we really appreciate our transportation staff, who will help us in that endeavor midday, and then of course, our bus mechanics and that crew, who will help us disinfect those buses at night. We greatly appreciate that. We are, it will be transportation, we're going to talk a little bit more about that, because we have a survey that just went out this afternoon, but transportation's a little tricky. We have to reduce the capacity on those buses to keep, to reduce risk, but at the same time, that provides a challenge to try to transport our students who are eligible and have chosen to come in the in-person or the hybrid model. So here's where we really, you're going to hear when I get to the next slide about the survey, if you are willing and able to drive your children, we would greatly appreciate that. We know that you're eligible, and if you don't have the means, we're going to get you here, but if you can and have the ability, time, and transportation, we, at least initially, in this first half a year, would greatly appreciate you helping us with that endeavor. This is hot off the guidance I just received, just changed this slide about an hour ago. And for those who were on the call who may have asked this, and I answered it differently a month ago, the New York State Department of Transportation, the Department of Education, Department of Health, have come together and they've changed the guidance. Prior to this new change, hand sanitizer, especially alcohol-based hand sanitizers, were not allowed on buses. They're a combustible substance, and if you heard my town hall with staff today, you would have heard me say, you can't use them on buses. However, tonight, as a lot of things in the opening plan, and we said many times, we need to be flexible, because things are changing, sometimes faster than we can keep track of it. Here's something that we're going to have to look into beginning tomorrow, but we are able to install hand sanitizers on the bus. I think that's great news. I think the fact that we can get students to maybe do a little spritz of hand sanitizer as they're getting on the bus will help us knock down this virus and potentially reduce the risk of our bus riders. So more to come on that, that is literally an hour old. You heard me talk about the transportation survey. So you're only going to receive this survey if you are eligible for transportation. If you were eligible for transportation a few weeks ago, we sent you a survey asking for information about your comfort level, should you choose in-person education of riding the bus, and what percentage of the eligible riders had or were willing and able to transport their students if needed. Well, that was very helpful, and we thank you for that. But now, since our deadline to identify whether you wanted to select in-person or full remote has taken place, that deadline was last Monday, we now know and can identify the group of people who are eligible for transportation who have not selected full remote, or in other words, have selected in-person, which could be either five days a week if you're in grades pre-K through 6, or it could be on a hybrid schedule, which we're going to talk more about, in grades 7 through 12. This is a very extremely important survey to us. What we're asking is, we're asking everybody who gets the survey to respond to it. So this is another "please and thank you," but this is a real big one. So if you're eligible for transportation, you're receiving the survey, and you're receiving it only if you indicated that you did not select full remote. We've taken those names off the list, and we're asking everyone to respond, and we're asking you to respond by Monday the 24th. And so it's a quick survey. If you need transportation, indicate that, but if there's at all an opportunity for you to assist us in driving your students to school, we greatly appreciate it, and you would respond, "I don't need that transportation" in the survey. So that just came out an hour or two ago, and you may not even have seen it yet, but please keep an eye on that if you're eligible for transportation and have selected some sort of in-person education. Let's get into school schedules a little bit. So for those of you who are new tonight, you may be hearing this for the first time, but we've kind of been working over the last month or two in narrowing down the options that we have available and how we would like to open for the school year. A shout-out to all of the administrative team, principals, assistant principals, and all of our supervisors, who played a critical role in trying to get us to where we are today. So here's our plan as it exists. At our elementary school, at MED, we're going to offer pre-K to 5 in-person, five days a week, and we're also going to, that includes all of our special education students and all of our ELL students. We also, about August 10th, released information that we had designed the ability to create a fully remote instructional option that was based on the demand that not only we saw regionally, but statewide, of parents who are just not feeling comfortable with their children coming back to school. And so we have a full remote option, K5 as well, and more to come with some of that. At the middle school level, we, again, at grade 6, feel very passionate about having those students here, five days a week, and then at grades 7 and 8, it will be a hybrid schedule, be an alternating schedule. And again, as I said on Monday, we are putting the final touches on that, and we're actually going to ask your opinion in a moment here, because we have some challenges. We're struggling a little bit with what that looks like, and we want to get some feedback from our viewers today. But we also have a full remote option available there. I'm also going to share with you some numbers in terms of people who have indicated that they would like full remote. And at the high school, very similar to the middle school, we have not only a full remote option, but we have an alternate schedule that we're working on. But we also, I also wanted to make mention of the CTE program. The CTE program, which is run by the Questar Bosse's, takes place at the CTE Center in Hudson, will be running, as in the past years, that will be running five days a week. We will be providing transportation to and from the CTE Center. I've had several questions over the last week as to whether parents or students can drive. Absolutely, that's not uncommon. So if your student has their license and has access to a car and would like to drive back and forth to the CTE Center, that's totally permissible, and has happened for years. And/or, if a parent feels more comfortable where they want, if one parent had asked if she could drive her student down there, absolutely. Anything that you can help us to... Anything that you can help us with transportation is greatly appreciated. What we are still working on, which is a bit of a challenge, is our BOSIs programs are typically either AM or BM, and in the past, that wasn't an issue. Students who were in the AM BOSIs program came back to our high school, plugged into our regular in-person program, and were fine, and vice versa, started out the high school and then went down to the CTE Center. What we have a little bit of a challenge about with is they're going to the CTE Center five days a week, but only attending in-person in a hybrid schedule. So on those days for which they are scheduled to be off-site in the hybrid, we don't right now have the capacity at the high school to accommodate the students who have selected in-person hybrid and our special education students, which we've given priority to for some obvious reasons, that they need some additional support, that in-person is much easier to provide. We just don't have the capacity, so we need to work through that, and we're going to have to work through that relatively soon, as in any of these questions have to be answered. So with that said, let me go one more thing. So we did, as I mentioned on August 10th, put out a remote learning request form that sought to ask parents to tell us whether, what their preference was for a predetermined amount of time at the start of the school year. I know some parents were a little frustrated, kind of the chicken and the egg, I can't tell you whether I want full remote, because I really don't know what your full program looks like, and I, you know, and we had the quandary that we can't really know how to design a full remote program if we don't know who is going to commit to it. It couldn't be a survey, I just feel I might use it, it's whether you really wanted to use it or not. So what you're seeing added on to this slide tonight, on the left-hand side, is you're seeing the numbers as of the other day, as of the deadline. At MED, we have 103 students who their parents have indicated they would prefer full remote. The middle school, high school, you can see the numbers there. District-wide, on average, we're somewhere in the vicinity of about 24% of our students have indicated that they would prefer, starting out the school year with full remote. So let me go on to the first, the commitment period, and then probably answer two of the most frequently asked questions about switching, right? So first of all, here you see another please and thank you. The commitment period at the elementary level goes throughout, goes through the first trimester, which ends on December 3rd, and at the high school goes through the first quarter. If you've been keeping track of what's going on in other districts, some of them have done it through the first, end of December or through the first semester. We're giving parents a little more flexibility here, which could cause a little bit of scheduling issues with us, but we're really trying to make this as palatable as possible. So we will allow parents to notify us in advance of that date, at a minimum of two weeks, as to whether that model is working out for them or they're choosing to switch. With that said, let's talk a little bit about those frequently asked questions. If I select in-person model, can I then go remote? So the answer is possibly. If you've selected in-person remote and you're not forced into a remote situation, through a quarantine situation or something else, but just think that that might be a better fit for your child, you would reach out to your building principal and we'd have that discussion. Going from in-person to remote, we don't feel is going to be as problematic as the opposite. If you have selected remote and want to go back in-person, you could clearly understand how that might be challenging for us. If we set aside a certain number of seats within a classroom and we're maxed out in that section or in that classroom, it's not as easy for us to take someone who has chosen remote and bring them back in-person. However, we will always try, do the best except possible, to do what's in the best interest of the student. I've said this time and time again, if we have a student who has selected full remote and through conversations with the classroom teacher, the school counselor, psychologist, social worker, parent, principal, it is not working out, and we don't want anything to be a disaster this year. So that's where we need to have a conversation. And if at all possible, we would, and through mutual agreement, we will try everything we can to allow for that student to come back in. We don't want anybody to fail, and I don't mean fail core, I just mean fail in general with any of these models. I must have put the survey just a little bit later. I have a poll for you tonight we're going to do. It's a couple more slides. Just a couple other things. I did mention that, you know, special education, ENLs and other vulnerable populations are some of our focus with in-person priorities. I do get a question often about 180-day calendar. We are still under the guidance of the State Education Department and 180 days. Our school year will start on September 8th. It just so happens that from September 8th through the 11th will be superintendent's conference days, and no students will be on campus, so don't misinterpret when I said school starts on September 8th. It doesn't start on September 8th for our students, it starts on September 8th for our staff. Learning, and I'm going to tell you why I'm saying it like that, learning instruction starts on September 14th. However, it may not start for everyone, and for most people, it won't start in-person. There's some very small exceptions to that that we're going to review, but learning starts on September 14th, and our school year goes to about June 25th. And if everything goes well, I don't have a crystal ball right now, graduation, if everything takes place as it has in the past, would be likely that Friday the 26th, but we're way far away from figuring that out. And right now, another question that I get often is grade three through eight testing, the New York State assessment, assessments in grades three through eight and the regions, will they take place? Well, they certainly didn't take place last year, but this year's a whole brand new year. And in terms of the grades three through eight assessments, that's tied into the state needing a waiver from the federal government based on accountability as to whether they would allow us to not do those assessments again this year. You could certainly imagine how difficult anybody thinks that assessing this situation is less than ideal, and how that data could ever be useful, but right now, they still are on the table, as well as regions exams, and it's just way, way too early to make a prediction as to where we're going to be with that. Attendance, attendance is going to be different than what you, we did in the spring when we went to, kind of pivoted on a moment's notice and went to remote learning. There will be daily expectations, daily interactions between students and teachers, and there's an expectation for attendance, daily attendance, regardless of whether the student is remote, hybrid, full remote, in-person, we will be taking attendance. And yes, the state has not given us a dispensation in terms of the determination to become chronically absent. So if students are chronically absent for 10% of the time, which is roughly 18 days in the year, that would be a designation that would work against the district's accountability measures. With that said, we're in a new world, right? So if a student develops some COVID-like symptoms, is sent home for a precautionary period of time, and is not, is not developed into anything symptomatic, and is feeling well or feeling well enough, they certainly could participate. Our hope is that they would participate in remote instruction, and if they participate in remote instruction, that is not considered an absence. However, if a student is ill, and we never want any of our students who are not feeling well to have to participate, but if the student is ill, will have to be in communication between the school and the home, and that might be, very well be a sick day where that student doesn't have the expectation that they're doing anything remotely. So, but that's a little word about attendance. I know for those of you who are sports, involved in sports and extracurricular activities, this has been the case for about the past month, I believe. Right now, we just don't know. There are a couple proposals on the table. One is, if everything stays the way it is, the governor may give us the green light to have school sports start, and that may be, it'll be a delayed schedule, but there's one proposal out there where sports would start in September. And then if that doesn't work out, then there's also a second proposal where there'd be a condensed schedule starting in January, where the winter, fall, and spring sports, with a little bit of overlap, would all take place between January and June. So we just don't know right now. If, one question I do get, regardless of whether sports or, regardless of whether it's sports or extracurricular activities, if those activities take place, it doesn't matter whether you selected full remote or in-person instruction. Everyone will be allowed to participate should those activities be available. I'm going to talk a little bit more about childcare when we get to the opening week schedule. Here's one, here's another place where you see my little logo, please and thank you. Immunizations, commonly asked questions, commonly asked question, there is no gray area here, no exception, black and white, whether you're remote, full remote, hybrid or in-person, if you are enrolled in the Chatham Central School District, your child must be immunized, and we must have proof of that no later than September 8th, or the superintendent will have to exclude you from instruction. I don't relish the thought to send you a letter that says that you cannot participate in any form of instruction, starting on September 14th, if you have not met that criteria. There was some latitude in the spring because of COVID and parents working through the CDC catch-up schedule with trouble getting appointments with their primary care physicians and things like that. That is not the case. Sorry about that, I should have cut that off. That is not the case. So that's a word on immunizations. Grading and assessments, the one note I wanted to make here was, we heard loud and clear what did not go well in the spring, and I think there isn't a teacher, administrator, or any professional here at the district that thinks that it could be the same as it was in the spring. We had some very reasonable expectations for students, and we just wanted to get through that crisis, but now we're in a new school year, and regardless of whether you're in-person, remote, or hybrid, the grading expectations will be similar to what they have been in the past, that's still to be finalized, but there will be grading expectations. Student work will be graded and tracked and completed, and there will be course grades and assessments. Okay, so this, this has been updated. If you've been with us at one of the previous town hall meetings, you need to pay a little close attention because some things have changed since Monday, Monday evening. So for those of you, I'll start with, for those of you, this is a little bit of an eye chart. This is now available, we posted it this afternoon, it is available as a PDF on our website, and again, just as a reminder, you go to the webpage, coronavirus, halfway down the page, you're going to see opening week grid, August 20th. And so let me tell you what you're, if you're seeing this for the first time, what you're seeing. We made a decision, and it varies by district regionally, but we made this decision based on what we believe is in the best interest of our Chatham students. What you're seeing is a calendar that goes, takes us from Labor Day through the first week of October. I've mentioned before that the school year opens for staff on the 8th. The 8th through the 11th are our four, what they call superintendent's conference days, that's for staff only. We did that like every district in, I think, the greater capital region, to be able to provide our teachers with some much-needed professional development and support to be successful this year, and that's what we're doing those four days. Now, the week of September 14th, here's where there's been a little change, but also want to be very clear, because this, there's a lot of information on this chart. The 14th, 15th, and 16th, well, I should say that all students, with the exceptions that I'm going to talk about, will be full remote from Monday the 14th to at least Friday the 25th of September. Now, with that said, who are some of the students who are not going to be remote during that time period, and what other programs might we have in place to help parents mitigate the impact of that? So first, on those three days, the 14th, 15th, and 16th, as those kindergarten parents may have heard today in that special meeting for them, that is going to be set aside for screening kindergarten students, which we were not able to do in the spring or in the summer. So that, on those three days, kindergarten parents will be contacted directly by the school, and on one of those days, their child will be in a cohort that will be evaluated by our kindergarten teachers, so that we know how to properly place them in classes for the new school year. Let's stay with the kindergarteners for a second. This is different. We were going to do screening all week. We don't believe we need all week. Thank you to the kindergarten teachers for working this out. Kindergartens, kindergarten students will start full-time on Thursday, September 17th. So that's a change from when we last spoke. That also means that no other students in grades one through five will be on campus, except another change you need to be aware of, our self-contained special ed classes are now going to all start on September 14th. So for the two classes that we have at MED, the one class at the middle school and the one class at the high school, if you are a parent of a student who is in a self-contained special education class and is selected to be in-person, then that program will start, including transportation, on September 14th. More information will be coming to you folks. Oh, so during those two weeks, September 14th through 9/25, we also know that that could be a hardship to some parents who are working. And so what we, if you look on the left-hand side, what we've created, and we don't want to call it childcare, we're calling it learning support. What we're able to provide, from the hours of 7:40 to 2:40, or 2:30 to 2:40, roughly the traditional school day, the ability for you to drop off your student, for us to have them in a classroom that will be supervised and help them get online and do the remote instruction like their peers are doing from home. So we are able to design that and engineer that, and make that available to parents. That's available to parents in grades one through five, Monday through Friday. A survey is being developed now, will likely go out tomorrow, but no later than early next week. You do not have to participate every day, Monday through Friday, both weeks, we're actually going to have you, you don't have to, you don't have to participate for the entire time. We have a lot of flexibility. If you work part-time mornings, Monday through Friday, well, you're, you could probably subscribe for Monday through Friday from 7:40 to 12:30, and you can pick up your child on your way home. So that's, that's what we're working on. You can take as little or as much time in those two weeks. Just let me make sure you heard, we are not providing transportation during those two weeks for that program. You will have to drop off and pick up your child. Also, in terms of, I think I just saw, I should probably make a note about Chatham Kids Club. Chatham Kids Club is running a program this year. I would encourage you to reach out if you've used them in the past, or potentially are interested in using them in the future, please reach out to them. They are working on some possible options that week of, the first week of school when the staff is here. So if you need some help, September 8th through the 11th, they may be able to help you there, and then also wraparound services, which they traditionally do before and after care. Now, I do believe that some of their capacity is diminished based on proper social distancing, like it was this summer, so they may not be able to accommodate the numbers that they have in the past, but they are wonderful to work with and would encourage you to reach out to them. So let's stay with that week, that week, the 14th through the 18th, just to review, all other students, except self-contained special ed, will be learning remote. The following week, so now at this point, we're adding in pre-kindergarten students, pre-K starts on the 21st. Our kindergarten students are already back, our self-contained special education classes back, and our learning support continues to run throughout that week, and then again, at the middle and high school, everyone is still remote. Here's where we switch gears a little bit. Now, starting on Monday, the 28th of September, here's what we're calling a transition week. This week, we're bringing back select groups of students on specific dates. Let me explain that. So for instance, on Monday, the 28th, that day, remember, pre-K, K, and self-contained special ed are already in the building, but in addition to them, that, we are bringing back grade five and only grade five on that day. So that day, grade five will be back, teachers will be able to go over all the new protocols and procedures with our grade five students. Now, on Tuesday, Tuesday, grade five doesn't come in, only grade four, and then Wednesday, only grade three, grade two on Thursday, grade one on Friday. That may have not been clear in the last thing, it's not additive, it's only that grade that we're indicating. Some people thought that, well, grade five on Monday, then four and five, and no, it's only that grade that week. At the middle school, grade six will be in on Monday, and this is where we're differentiating in the middle school between grade seven- grade 7 and grade 8 are split into two cohorts, A and B. So on Tuesday, grade 7, A cohort would be in. Wednesday, 8A. Thursday, 7B. Friday, 8B. And you'll be hearing more information from the school as to what cohort you're in. It's typically alphabetical, and to the best extent possible, we're trying to keep siblings and households together. We know that that could be very problematic. I did see a question. The information on signing up for learning support is going out tomorrow or Monday. So don't worry, no one has missed that. That information is going out tomorrow or Monday, and we'll probably have you have to indicate that by, we're going to indicate that you would like that by, I think, the 31st to the 1st. So you'll have a solid, good week or so to let us know whether you want to take advantage of that. And as I said earlier, you might say, we need Tuesday, Thursday, all day. Other families might need Wednesday, Wednesday, and Friday from 7:40 to 12:30. So we have a lot of flexibility to accommodate. One thing I have, this is another, please, thank you. That, first of all, it's only reserved for grades 1 through 5, and we don't have the capacity to bring everybody back during that time period. So I'm imploring, I'm asking, if you don't need that, if you are already home and you can manage with your children home for those weeks, we would, this is another place where you can really help us out. If you need it, use it. But if you don't need it, please refrain from using it. We would greatly appreciate it. We know that you probably need a break. The summer was long. But before you know it, your kids will be back, and you'll have that time at home. But if you don't need it, we are asking to refrain from signing up for that. I did mention at the high school, that transition week, a little different than the middle school. It's not by A or B cohort. It's by grade level. So on Monday, all 9th graders come back. Tuesday, only 10th graders come back. Wednesday, only 11th. Thursday, only 12th. And on Friday, the 2nd of October, that's a full remote day for high school. No students will be on-site. That allows, is going to allow some additional time for our teachers to get ready for the following week. And then October 5th is here. This is the date where everyone will be the first date that everyone is in the mode they selected. So if you are K-6 and you're in-person, you're coming in full-time starting that day. If you are in the 7, 12, hybrid, you might be in the A cohort that day. Whatever learning plan you're going to be in until that trisemester or that quarter ends, that fully begins on the 5th. So I hope we've done a decent job of explaining that, our strategy there. So now, here's where we're going to do a poll. Here's what we're struggling with. I'm being very transparent. Ministers and I were together for quite a few hours today, and we want your opinion, right? We are, we've got a little bit of a quandary. I've described it, we're at a crossroads. We, and so I'm not talking about full remote. If you've selected full remote and you send in the form, you're good to go. And I'm not talking K-6 because you're coming in Monday through Friday if you're in the in-person model. What I'm talking about now is our 7 through 12, folks. We have a couple options. And the way, best I can describe, and these are my words, one emphasizes probably instruction, and one emphasizes more safety. So let me try to take a crack at this. Plan A is, allows in-person instruction from the course teacher when at school. So when in the hybrid model, if I'm taking algebra, I would be in my teacher's algebra class. They may have 12 kids in front of them and two kids remote, but I will be with my classroom teacher. And we're leaving, you know, teachers will have to decide based on their own style and the content area, how that's going to work. They're the problem solvers there. That's great. That looks more like a traditional nine-period schedule. However, the downside of that is we have students moving through the building more frequently throughout the whole day. And that will allow, or not allow, but that would potentially expose us to additional exposure risks or set us up for additional exposure risks. So that model makes a lot of sense in terms of, the whole reason why our teachers love seeing our students is they can interact with them and they can, you know, teach them in person. But the downside is, they would, students would be moving through a traditional model, and that may not be ideal, especially as we're trying to contain students from movement and stuff. Plan B considers, it's an interesting concept. I'm going to do this slowly. Considers all students remote. Conceptually, considers all students remote regardless of their location, of the location of the delivery of instruction. Whether you're at home or in school, everybody is theoretically remote. What do I mean by that? That sounds confusing. Well, in this model, students come in. They are assigned a classroom. In that classroom, there may be, there will likely be, it will vary by period. There may be a teacher in the classroom one period. There may be a teaching assistant in the classroom supervising the next period. However, those students are on their device, and whether they're home or they're in school, they are receiving the instruction. So now, well, the downside is, I'm coming to school. That sounds ridiculous that I come to school and not have my classroom teacher. It does, until I tell you that, well, guess what? You're in the classroom all day. That's a very scary notion for some. But that means that you're not moving around the building. You're not intermingling with other cohorts of students. You're not increasing the exposure risk. So yes, we, you know, we understand that students in that room may need, there might be a lunch break, or there might be, you know, there might be a time where they're going to one or two rooms, but it's not necessarily 8 or 9. So with that said, I'm going to try something that I have never used before on Zoom. So if it dies, I'm going to offer a poll. What I'm going to do, and on your screen, is I'm going to launch this poll which says, "We are interested in your opinion regarding the plan for grades 7 through 12. Plan A is in-person instruction from the course teacher, but increased exposure risk in our estimation. Plan B minimizes exposure, but course materials are all presented remotely, regardless of location." So I'm going to launch that poll. And, you know, I wish I had some, like, really cool music, or if I was talented, I would sing to you. But I can see that you guys are answering the poll. And if you would take, I'll give you 30 seconds. We have a number of people on the call. So while you're doing that poll, someone brought to my attention one other thing that I could probably add to that slide. During that learning support period, we will not be running our food service program for those students. So if you are doing that program, you need to send in your student with a little brown bag for lunch. So I will make a note on that screen. So make sure that if that's something you're going to take advantage of, of course, if you're here half-day, maybe that's not needed. But if you're sending your child 7:40 to 2:40, those two weeks of the learning support option, you will need that. So. All right. It looks like a couple people, maybe, I don't know if they're connected by phone or answering in the thing. So it looks like the poll has come to an end. So let's see how it turned out. Okay. And now I'm going to share the results. Can you see that on the screen?
Yes.
Okay, cool. This worked out pretty good. So, you know, the ministers and I said, we're having difficulty figuring this out. So why don't we ask our parents? And we may broaden this survey really soon to the entire school community, but we had a bunch of you connected tonight. Why not ask? So as you can see, the results is that, right now, 60/40. So almost two, almost just under two-thirds of you prefer to have the classroom teacher teach the course, the in-person model, but understand that that may increase the exposure risk. And again, I'm, you know, we are going to clean and disinfect, and students are wearing masks. We're going to try to the best extent possible to not have, you know, exposure risk. But one model clearly offers an opportunity for some risks more than others. So thank you. Thank you for, on a couple levels. One, I have never used the Zoom poll, so you were our test group, and I appreciate you for participating. So let's go on here. One of the things I've been able to do since this is the fourth town hall is I've been able to incorporate a lot of the questions that have been previously answered right into the presentation. So tonight, I, during the course of the presentation, I know that I've answered all of the, will have answered all of the questions that came in through email, either by directly responding to those people who sent it in or making it part of the presentation. And then we'll go to some email questions that have been asked tonight. There's a few that we still have to get to. Let me keep going here. I talked about some resources that we added last Friday, question and answer, contact tracing. And this is kind of just a screenshot. That's what the opening questions and answers. If you're thinking of something that we haven't addressed tonight, you might want to peruse that thing. Let's talk a little bit about contact tracing, or sorry, yeah, COVID testing. So I mentioned a little bit about, and I've got a flowchart to show you. The one thing, and a shout-out if any of our nurses are connected, because I don't envy them. What I said to the staff today is, you know, so many of the COVID symptoms are similar to just so many other things that we're so accustomed to seeing, right? You have allergies. If you have a strep throat, if you have an ear infection, a sinus infection. You know, there's a variety of reasons why students run fevers or, you know, have other, that may have just the seasonal flu or a cold. So it's going to be really difficult. Their job is not to be a medical practitioner, a doctor. They will assess the situation. They are wonderful, well-qualified individuals. But we are then going to, you know, immediately contact the parents. And from there, the recommendation is that the parent, the recommendation of the Department of Health, the parent contacts a primary care provider, as I mentioned earlier, to seek advice. And then only then, in collaboration with that provider, will you determine what to do. It may very well be that the provider decides, you know, that sounds awful like this. Why don't you come into the office? Let's test for that. If they can eliminate COVID with somewhat, some high degree of certainty, it may very well be that they give you a note and the child comes back to school the next day. Or comes back after a few days. Child isn't feeling well. You know, once the fever subsides, 48, 72 hours, you can come back to school. They do need to come back to school with a doctor's note. Once a student has gone home with suspected or probable symptoms, you can only return with a doctor's note. Now, the doctor may say, boy, this looks awful suspicious. Two or three COVID symptoms. I'm going to send them for a test. I do have a list of the testing centers in the region. He sends the child for a test. The test results vary. I've heard as little as a couple days when it goes to our state lab, as many as 10 when it goes to a national testing center. So, and you've heard me say it time and time again, 10 days probably doesn't help any of us. At that point, the child's probably already, well, will be in quarantine and probably almost towards the end of a quarantine period. So, but if the test, if and when the test comes back, if it comes back negative, then the doctor can give you a note or the test results to return. If there's a positive result, then that's when really, we're going to rely on, well, we're going to rely on each other. We rely on the Columbia County Department of Health, and they're going to rely on us. They're going to come in, and we're going to have a conversation in terms of, and this is no surprise. You've heard about contact tracing for months now. They're going to come in and say, okay, so Johnny is in second grade. He's dropped off in the morning by his parent. He goes into the second-grade classroom, and that's pretty, that's pretty much where Johnny is. So it may very well be that the recommendation is that everyone in that class, including the classroom teacher, would quarantine, precautionary quarantine, because now they've come in contact with a known case. It doesn't mean, and I have another slide, that we're going to close the school down. Right now, there will not be, like it was in the spring, where the governor said if a positive case came out, closing the school for 24 hours, and then we'll reevaluate the extent for which you need to remain closed. That's not the case. We're going to get our direction from the Department of Health. They may say, okay, let's shut down that classroom. Let's get that classroom deep cleaned and sanitized and disinfected and whatever we need to do. And then students, after they go through the quarantine period, would come back, would come back to that class. In both, in all those cases, it will be a letter from the Department of Health, in this case Columbia County, required to return to school. They're the ones that have to clear students and staff from quarantine. There's some other, I want to see if I go to this. And so you can see where, we did the poll earlier, where that could be, that's where we talked about exposure risk. If a high school student has a positive case and they were only in one classroom during the entire day or two, that's a lot smaller exposure than if they had been in five classrooms. It could be much more widespread. And for the purposes of contact tracing, from what's been shared to me on my weekly calls with the Department of Health, typically, if you're with somebody that isn't, that is within six feet for more than 10 minutes, that isn't proper, that is within six feet for more than 10 minutes, so certainly any student in a classroom would, would fall into that category, would be considered a close contact, and would be part of the quarantine process. This is a chart that just kind of goes through those three scenarios. It's, you know, that's also available on the website. That's part of that COVID testing document that I referred to, if you want to take a look at it. It's a little bit more of a visual guide to how we would go through that process. As I mentioned earlier, there's testing sites all over the region, from Albany, Albany to Belaishia, to Hudson, to Kingston, Colony, Latham. And you would be probably directed by your primary care provider to, to what site might work best for you. I already mentioned this slide, school closure. So I'm going to move on. And we also talked about, I didn't talk about, too much about contact tracing. Let me tell you that, one of the things that we will, or the role we will play with the Columbia County Department of Health, is helping them know who's in close contact with your child. So class lists, list of activities, places in the building where that child may have visited, people they may have come in contact with. And then they certainly would contact you, you know, if a child plays a sport, or went over to a relative's house, you will be interviewed by a health, a public health nurse, and, and a contact tracer from the department, and they will methodically work through that process. We are keeping, you know, student schedules up to date. We have, we will have, and it says visitor logs. We're not allowing visitors in our building, but that doesn't mean that we don't have a time where there's a maintenance worker or someone. We will have good records of who's where on our property. And so that's contact tracing. And some more information if you want to follow that. Let's move into something that you guys asked for, which is, which is new tonight. So, we know that in the spring, parents were challenged, they became our, you had to become a tech assistant, you're trying to support your child at home with remote instruction. So now, either you've chosen full remote, or you have a child in grade six, or seven through 12, and, and it's a hybrid mode, so on one of the two days, they may be home. Or maybe even your, your pre-K through sixth grader is ill, and home for a few days, or maybe even unfortunately quarantine. There'll be times where there's remote instruction going on in the home. And so we want to give you some opportunities to learn more about the technology that we had in place, and have added, and to be able to better support you as parents. So, and a shout out to Mike Stead, who helped with our phenomenal tech resources within the district, tech teachers, teachers who are very proficient, they've put together some parent tech workshops for you. They're taking place next week, on, let's see, that's Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, I think. They're about an hour long. I'm going to show you a little promo. And basically, the first half hour is going to be showing you some of the stuff that your child's going to be exposed to, some additional information. One of the things that we heard loud and clear in the spring is, try to keep the number, the complexity and the number of products you're using to a minimum, so we can support it. So, we did consider potentially going to a new learning management system, but we felt that it's just, it was just not enough time. Those, those migrations take sometimes a year. So we are going to stay with Google Classroom. At the elementary level, we're introducing another product, K2, K3, that's a little easier for that population to use. A lot more information about that during these tech tornadoes. The last half hour of that program is for you to ask questions. So, I believe information about that went out today, or is available on our website. But with that, I just want to show you a 50-second commercial on that. Oh, that's not good. That didn't work the way I wanted it to. Okay, hang on. That did not work. It's just in the wrong location. Hang on. I, I have another way to get to that. So bear with me. You know, I have a plan B today. So, as a former tech guy, you never have one way of doing anything. Okay. Hang on there. That's full screen. I didn't want that. Hang on. So, I'm going to... Yeah, I could move this over. Oh, wait, you know what? Here, okay, yes. Let me, let me stop sharing my screen. I'll bring that video up, and then we'll do it full screen. So hang on a second. Okay. Screen share. Yeah, it's, you know, it's over here. Bear with me. We're getting there. Here. Screen share. Okay. Now, you see that?
Yeah.
Thank you. I'd like to thank everyone who worked on that, hopefully. I'm unmuted now. Okay. Can you hear me? Okay. All right. So just a couple things. We'll get to a few questions, and we're doing really well tonight. I guess we're able to streamline this. So, just, just to kind of let you know that we, we believe that student voice, student input is important, that Mr. Thorson, Mr. Burns, Mr. Porson, Mr. Stead have facilitated two student forums, the end of July, and then one just this week. They were really well attended. I think this week, we had 30 or 40 students on. And I believe they're planning at least another one before school starts. Some great ideas, some great insight from our students. So we want to make sure that we include their voice. And I wanted to make sure you were aware that we were doing that as well. This last time, we did send information to parents, so they could help make sure that the students received, or were aware of the opportunity. Okay. This is just a recap, that this is our fifth town hall meeting for, which were for the general public. And the, the, we had, we had one dedicated to staff today. You know what I realized, is I dropped the slide from the beginning, and didn't tell you that our wonderful principals have joined us tonight. They haven't had a chance to get a word in edgewise when, when I'm speaking, but we're going to engage them in the next few minutes, a couple of questions that we had. I just realized that since I was with you, I did the webinar alone on Monday, I took that slide out. But I do want to thank Mr. Thorson at the high school, Mr. Burns to Mill School, Ms. Reno at MED, for making sure that they were listening in. And I know they would have spoke up if I misspoke. They did make sure that we corrected some of the information. And we did mention earlier, don't stop those emails coming. Chatham United, here's another please and thank you. That's a way where we can tell what you're thinking, and what you need from us in terms of information. So don't stop those emails from coming. And so let's, let's, I'm going to go, I'm going to skip this, because I've addressed all the questions that were submitted ahead of time. And I'm going to go to the questions that were submitted tonight. And I'm going to ask my principals, who have patiently waited to kind of join in. "Will children have a tour of the isolation room with the nurse? Maybe they can see a possible new location of treatment or waiting?" You know, I don't, if, if maybe one of the principals would join in. The isolation room is not very exciting. It's a room where, you know, we've set up, but, Mr. Mr. Burns, you want to?
Yeah, sure. You know, that's a good question. I think, you know, with everything, we're looking at new types of orientations for our kids, and our staff. And I think some of that is going to include looking at some of these new rooms, like the isolation room. Now, I feel like Dr. D'Angelo just said, it's not going to be that exciting of a room. I think explaining to the students, you know, a little bit more about the room is definitely a good idea.
Yeah, why it's being used, you know, for their safety, absolutely. That's going to be part of the orientation, and how we'll walk through the new, kind of the new, the new world order with our students.
Before I go on, I mean, we don't have a lot of, we probably have a half a dozen questions that have come in that haven't been answered tonight. I just like to invite the principals. Is there anything from the presentation that I went through that you'd like to augment, or make a comment about, especially in terms of, you know, Plan A, Plan B? I know, you know, the poll wasn't totally conclusive, but gave us some insight to continue our conversations over the next couple of days.
Sal, I do know that this question came in today during the kindergarten meeting. And I just wanted to clarify that, on the first three days of kindergarten screening, as well as every day that kindergarteners and preschoolers who are eligible to ride the bus, transportation will be provided. So transportation will definitely be provided those first three days of screening, as well as the entire time that they're at school.
Thank you. I may have confused the matters when I said that there's no transportation for learning support, but there is transportation for our kindergarten students, our self-contained special ed students who are eligible for transportation, and our pre-K once it starts. Awesome. Let me go into some questions. So, if you, if you are a worker at the school, and your child is sent home with COVID symptoms, what are the guidelines as to when you, and how you can return to work, or does it not affect you as a worker? Let me, actually, you brought up another, another good point. And this is coming from Columbia County, and I applaud them for being extremely conservative. But I, I need to make sure that we get this out there for parents as well. This may not be consistent between counties, but this is what we're dealing with for the six school districts that reside within Columbia County. That is, if your child tests with a fever, the protocol is that we're going to have to send all siblings home. So if you have three children within the district, and one tests with a fever, we're going to be making a call that you pick up all children. And so you could make, by extension, you could say that since a worker is in that family, and I'll have to get, take a closer look at this with the protocols, it may very well be that the worker has to go home with the student as well. So, more to come on that. But thank you. That's, that's a new question for us. So I'll have to just take a closer look. Will, oh, will there be transportation for the self-contained special ed children during the full remote learning time? So, yes. I'm sorry, I just saw that. Kristen had also spoken about that. Here, John, here's one. It might...
Al, so I just wanted to be clear. The self-contained, that's the life skills, the self-contained life skills classes, which is a very small population of students. I just don't want people to be confused about that.
Thank you. So just to say that differently, it's not all special education students, it's not all students with an INP. It's just those in those four life skills classes. Thank you, John. Here's one. "In Plan A, will the in-person teacher be simultaneously doing remote presenting to the other cohort?" You guys want to take a crack at that?
Sure. We really haven't defined that fully yet. We're working with the teachers. I think the way we see that is, we, we recognize that we needed to ramp up the rigor from, from what we did last year, and that kids need to be engaged, you know, more completely while they're at home during a remote instruction. Saying that, I don't think you will be, the kids will be expected to be on their computers when they're home nine periods a day. The way I see it is, it's a tool, and that's an opportunity when it would, when it makes sense. But I think teachers will be using different strategies to get at that, the audience that's in front of them, actually physically in school, and the audience that's, that's home remotely. So again, I wouldn't say every single day, kids are going to have to sit home in front of a computer for nine periods a day. But there will be times when there will be expectations for, for students to, to see live instruction. There will be times when students are, I would imagine, participating with their, with their classmates. We're working through that with teachers. But that is absolutely one of the tools that, you know, that we'd like to offer teachers to reach all their students. Sal, you're on mute.
Thank you. I hate when that happens. "What about the high prevalence of asymptomatic cases in children? This is the way in which COVID is likely to be spread in this population." I don't disagree with that. I'm not so sure. I guess that's why we put all the exposure risk in place. And that's why, yes, that's why we're wearing masks, and we're cleaning and disinfecting, because we just don't know that asymptomatic, asymptomatic population. This is a good one. "How would a parent get the letter from the Department of Health through their doctor?" The way I understand it, and I will get, we'll get clarification the next time I'm on that conference call, is that if you are in quarantine, you will have a case manager, a public health nurse that will be following your family. I believe they call daily. And at some point closer to the end of that quarantine period, I'll find this out. I'm assuming they would then email you, or, you know, give you some sort of documentation. But they're aware that that's their responsibility to give you, to give the school upon return. But that's a good question. We'll, we'll do some follow-up on that. Here's one for secondary. "Regardless of choice A or B, the students will still be six foot apart, correct? So that they still will be considered a need for quarantine if there was a positive case?" And so, the answer is that, yes, we're still going to socially distance within the classroom, regardless of the choice of model. And my understanding is, regardless of what we do, wear masks, socially distance, if there's a positive case within the classroom, that will likely be sufficient for the Department of Health to do a precautionary quarantine for the entire class. But again, that's going to be their call. And at this point, since we haven't had a case, those are hypotheticals that we go through with the Department of Health. But because students will be in class for, and, and, you know, the Department of Health Director does a wonderful job in terms of viral load, and, and all the science on this. But basically, because students will be in contact for over that 10-minute period, and, and the virus is very aerosol, that they take, they take that precaution. Oh, this is a great one for you guys. We talked about this today. I'm going to sneeze, I think. "Has anything been said about music, band, orchestra, choir, musical? Sports have been mentioned, but nothing about these programs." John, Mike, I know we talked about this today. Can you maybe, and maybe even in terms of those two different models, you know, talk about the amount of work that you've gone into trying to figure out how we do this?
Sure. Yeah, you know, we're both looking at still running a nine-period schedule. We've been working with the music department. We've been great, trying to figure out the best way, especially with the, with those bigger classes, you know. The hard part about a lot of our classes, like chorus, we have, we have a lot of interest in their big groups. So we're trying to be, trying to figure out, like, everything safe this way, to be able to deliver the instruction. So we have been working with music department on this, trying to figure out how to do it. In terms of musicals, so, I know at the middle school, they're planning on, they're working on the idea of a virtual musical. So, you know, that, that is still in the works to do it virtually.
So I can tell you at the elementary school, one of the things that we have really tried to do is create a model where the special area teachers are going to push into the classroom, and/or very small pull-out situations for possibly lessons for band and orchestra. So that is music for art. We're planning on our art teacher pushing in, our librarian pushing in. And we are hoping, and I, I really emphasize this today with the kindergarten parents, that we are hoping to hold all of our PE classes outside as much as possible. So what becomes really important is that kids are dressed appropriately for the weather. So when a student, if, if it's snowing outside, we may go outside in snowshoe. Or if it's, you know, above 20 degrees, or even 20 degrees outside, we're going to try to get outside, because as the CDC has indicated, it is much safer to be outside. So we're going to try to do the majority of our PE classes outside. However, we do have a very large gym. And so we would, regulations, I believe, say that we need to space the kids out 12 feet for PE. And so Mrs. Callow, Mr. Rolison, we believe that using the gym and making smaller classes, we can do that.
I don't have a whole lot more to offer than what Mike and Kristen said, only that, you know, this has really been our biggest dilemma. And the more restrictions that we put in, trying to limit movement, those things, that makes it very, very difficult to include some of those special classes in live instruction. And we recognize the importance of it. It's, you know, some of our students are most passionate about some of those classes. So, that, that is just one of the, the big things that we're trying to weed through, is how can we maintain the integrity of all of our programs, and be as safe as, as we possibly can. So, you know, that, that was why it was so, that's why we wanted to, to gauge some interest from the community tonight, to really see, you know, kind of where, where people stood with it. And I, and I think that we're all, we're all over with it. And, and that's some of the problem, is that we, we will address a situation, and if we make a decision, that may be fantastic for some of the people. And then there's a whole group of people that that created another problem for. So, this, herein lies, you know, one of our biggest battles. And I can tell you that across the board, we all value all of our programs. And we're doing our best to maintain the integrity of all of them, because I think they're all instrumental in, in bettering our students.
There's another question that kind of pertains to music. We might as well stay with that topic. "Will new fourth graders be offered the opportunity to begin an instrument this year? Any thought, Kristen, whether that's been discussed?
So I talked to Judd Hoffman, our band teacher, a little bit about this a couple of weeks ago, when he was in. And we talked about potentially doing some kind of four or five. But at this point, I think trying to make sure that we get all of our music, art, PE, library pushed in, it's something that we're definitely looking at. But I'm, I wish I had a better answer than, I don't know, right, right, right now.
It's understandable. Let's, I don't know what level this is, but I think all three of you. "Will the library be open for students to check out books in some form?" I know we're very concerned about shared, shared resources, but do you know if the librarians have weighed in on that?
I have, my librarian, Chelsea Phillips, who's marvelous, hasn't, she and I have not talked about that specifically. However, I have talked to many of the teacher leaders in the elementary school, and we have a lot of concerns with students checking out books, mostly just the amount of exposure that would be for kids moving around the building, moving around the library, having library books. There is some kind of special protocol, I believe, when they come back to be checked in. I don't really know what that is. So we're, we're exploring it. But at, right at this moment, we're not, we're not terribly confident that kids are going to be able to check out books from the school library. However, every teacher has their own classroom library in their classrooms. And we have access to a lot of multiple copies of books, where we may be able to allow students to check out books that are right within their own classroom library. And so they're only being shared maybe with themselves, and maybe one or two other students, where we can disinfect not shared throughout the entire building.
I know we have a couple wonderful librarians, and I know we have the public library that utilizes electronic books through overdrive. So I don't know how much, you know, we probably may have not needed, had the necessity in the past to explore electronic books. But that might be something, and I'm sure they, they're thinking about those things. They're immensely talented people. So we'll, we'll make sure they're aware of that, that question. Only a couple more left here. "If they are part of a learning pod," and I think learning pod is the, the learning support group, "can they go to Kids Club after that?" can they go to Kids Club after that? I would see no reason why they could not, as long as you've made arrangements with Kids Club. Remember what I said earlier, I think they have limited capacity. So if that's something that interests you, I would reach out to them. Kristin, I don't know if you have any?
I do know that Kids Club starts at a certain time. So if your work schedule is nine to one, they would not, Kids Club is not open at one. So you would need to make sure that they are open during the times that you would want them to be available. Also, while we're talking about the, the extra learning environment that we're going to offer to some elementary parents, I want to clarify that if you have chosen the remote model, this is not open to you. This is only open to parents who have decided that they want their child to be in-person learning. This is just to accommodate those people who did not expect us to start school so late in the year. And so if you have already chosen the remote model, this opportunity would not be available to you.
Thank you. I neglected to say that. I think we're at the last question. I know students at MED level participate in brain breaks. What ideas, if any, are in the works to allow students to break from instruction and move around?
So we are not going to encourage students to move around the classroom. However, we are going to encourage students to move around the outside of the building. So as I told the kindergarten parents this morning, this afternoon, that the district has been very generous in providing our students in the elementary school and I believe possibly in middle school and high school with some type of flexible seating, where if students need or want to go outside, they can. And teachers will be providing lessons outside. I feel strongly as the elementary principal that students need to be outside. And if we can provide learning outside, we're going to do that. A lot of our learning, we're going to try to take the standards that are for the New York State standards and kind of skew them so they have an environmental base. So maybe there's some environmental science or some environmental language art so that we can provide opportunities to be outside. So a lot of the breaks that students will be taking, I'm hoping they will be able to be taking them outside, not necessarily within their classroom where they have spent a large amount of time.
Okay. All righty. You, let's see here. I think that, we only had one other comment in terms of surveying for, helping us think of new alternative ideas. One thing I wanted to mention to parents that you wouldn't be aware of is that we have engaged a large number of our teachers who came in and are, and are currently still working on some subgroups that we set up to help us figure out some of these issues. A lot of time, each building has what we call a think tank, you know, the teacher leaders, and then we have, we form these subgroups. So a lot of time, an effort has gone into trying to creatively solve the solutions. But I appreciate your comment as well because I did say that it does take a village and we certainly appreciate it. That kind of brings us to the end of my presentation, our presentation. I don't, I'll give the principals if there's any last word that they may have. I usually always dominate that. So I'm just going to say, before I turn it over to them, thank you. We, on behalf of the entire staff, we want to thank our parents and community members for their continued support through these difficult times. We don't know how long we're going to be confronted with this, but we sure as, sure as heck are committed to making sure that we do the best by your children while they're, while they're with us. And I'll leave it to my three excellent principals to say goodnight and say whatever they might want to say in conclusion.
Go ahead, Kristin, go ahead.
No, go ahead, John. Go ahead. You go first.
I just wanted to say the same thing. Thank you to everybody. And I just don't want anybody to hesitate to reach out with any questions or concerns that you may have via email or phone call. You know, we're going to be here and totally appreciate your concerns. We're all parents. We have the same ones for our children and happy to discuss any, any questions or concerns that you may have. So thank you and anything that we can do to help you, please don't hesitate to reach out.
And that's basically what I was going to say is at any time, if you need to get in contact with us, you know, you can call the, one of the building offices. All of our email addresses are online. As I told the kindergarten parents today, and I, I can speak for John and Mike, that we want this year to be as safe and engaging as possible for all students, both remote and in school. And so please know that we're working really hard to make this the best educational experience we can this year.
Yeah, I'm going to ditto both of them. Just that, you know, thank you for your patience with all of this. We, we understand the anxieties that this causes everyone, including ourselves. And we really are working tirelessly to come up with the best plan that we feel is with safety at the forefront for all of our students. So we appreciate it. So thanks so much.
Well, with that, we'll let you have your evening back. Just a final reminder that the transportation survey for those who are eligible is out there. You can really help us by not only deciding to help bring your children to school, but to answer that survey for us. And we, we don't have any other town halls on the schedule just yet, but we will take a close look at the calendar in terms of opening. And I can certainly see us coming back and providing you updated information as we get closer to the actual opening. So folks, have a good night. Stay well, stay safe, and we appreciate your continued support.